I'd like to call the Nashville Town Council regular meeting to order at this time. Would you please stand for the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Let us pray. Again, we ask your guidance and your wisdom in helping us. Council, I'm gonna ask you, do you want us to approve these minutes, one at a time, or we go over them all and then have a motion to approve them all? We have, what, two, four, five sets? It's up to you. Okay, we have our August 18, 2020 meetings. Any corrections? And you said none. September the 1st, 2020. September the 16th, 2020. And September the 22nd, a call meeting minutes. And September the 30th, 2020, agenda meeting minutes. And you said there were no public comments. Okay. Let's go to our old business, which is our 6A in your little booklet, council. The Windy Oak, Laurel Springs Drainage Improvements. I'm gonna read the summary of the issue. Attached is the final flood study for the Windy Oak Drive and Laurel Springs Drive Drainage Improvements by Stocks Engineering. Last Thursday, Mike Stocks and I met, and that's our town manager, problem, and showed them the alternatives and costs for correcting the problem. The property owners are planning on attending the October 6 council meeting.
We went through these alternatives and those that were present, twin 48s, and then when you get down to Laurel on at $562,000. So that puts the whole thing in pipe. Alternative four is to, has very, actually, it has superior performance than the pipe, but you have an open waterway through the neighborhood. Change with engineering on that, on top of that. So, Jen, with the council members, let them, let you hear from them on which, which one.
Just state your name for the record.
I don't have any objection to the work being done, but I do object to an open waterway through, to do this, but, you know, I'd rather see it done that way properly and, you know, not take away from the property value of reason. If I can get, if we can get an answer tonight, when would it be of our falls in the next two years? And my house nearly flooded twice. So I know that this is on our street too, so just.
Thank you so kindly.
Sir, could I get your name again?
James, was James Larry?
Thank you. You can take that, you can take that off while you.
Two months. Right now, I'm, I'm one of the folks who's got on a corner of my property. So, is there gonna be reimbursement for that, if there's gonna be that? And also, is our septic system and had to have the.
Hopefully you don't have a septic because we have a sanitary sewer collection system throughout that neighborhood. I don't know when the fence was put in, but it would have to come out. And, you know, your backyard neighbor, I'll be there, but it has to be removed to do a project of some type. The town or the city isn't gonna put it back. You know something, you don't have to worry about it, probably.
They want the problem fixed, but we are obviously more in favor of option five. We have four children and it really looked like it's serving its purpose, in my opinion. And I know that was a, probably a temporary, temporary fix for that time, but I do understand option five is the more expensive, obviously, but that's the one we're in favor of just because of who wants an open ditch beside their house. If that would've been on the property when we purchased it three years ago, we probably wouldn't have purchased it. Like I said, it's full of water on the other side. It's, it almost has a smell over there constantly. It's full of water, full of dirt, full of trees growing up in the open ditch way. Obviously, I want it fixed. I'm, I'm probably more of the one can, better concerned citizens because I haven't seen the other incidents that happened, but the one that most recently happened was devastating. It did not cause any damage, luckily. I don't know how, but it got under our house and completely surrounded our home and garage. So we obviously want it fixed. And I, again, do understand the money concern, it's probably gonna be an issue, but we do live in the city, we do pay city taxes. I feel like it's a problem that needs to be fixed. We don't live in a flood zone. That's all I have.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Any other residents like to speak?
Hello, I'm Ryan Grant. I just recently purchased 212 Windy Oak Drive back in the beginning of July. So I haven't experienced any of the flooding issues yet. I'm in favor of four or five. I'm only here for the Kellys to kind of, you know, support them a little bit. My only concern is, like I said, four or five is good with me. I know with the fence, my fence is gonna have to come up and my building, my little barn that's on my property will probably have to be moved as well. The only concern with that is, is that it's built on a concrete slab, so it's not as simple as picking it up and moving it over. I'm not concerned with having to replace my fence. I looked at it, only about nine sections will have to be removed. But that's probably a three to $4,000 barn, and my only concern is, is getting reimbursed for that. I'm in agreeance with not wanting an open ditch running on the edge of my property as well. That's gonna bring in mosquitoes, snakes, other animals that are not wanted. Even if you look at the ditch that runs across South Creek Drive, I know there's not any concern here. But the water, it doesn't drain, it's sitting there stagnant. It smells, you know, you walk through there and the mosquitoes automatically get terrible walking through there. Like I said, my only concern is getting reimbursed for my barn and not having the open ditch run through there.
So I just want clarification, sorry. Number four is the open ditch?
Number four is the open ditch?
Correct.
I thought number three was the open ditch.
So maybe it's two and five.
Okay, so, yeah, five is the covered ditch, yes.
Five is covered, four is open.
Yeah, option three is still pipe, but it's not as big a pipe.
Okay.
And it doesn't perform as well.
Okay.
And four is open ditch.
Okay, so, okay, throw out four.
Throw out four.
I don't want that ditch.
Option three is even more, it's more expensive than four, less expensive than five.
Okay, anything but the open ditch, I'm.
Thank you.
I have a question. Who's, who's responsible for keeping those ditches clear?
That's what I was wondering.
Is that the town's responsibility?
It, it is the town's responsibility, and, and the guys do go down there and, and clean that ditch, but, you know, it's, it's full of big riprap, so it's difficult to clean. We do need to get down on that end on Laurel Spring if we got scrub trees coming in there again and, and spray that with the appropriate waterway type herbicide. From time to time, they do go down there, from what I understand from Thurman, and, and pick up the trash and the pop bottles and whatever else accumulates in there. It's probably only once or maybe twice a year, so it's not, it's not monthly. It's, you know, it's, it's much longer duration than that between the maintenance.
Is the, is the weather, is the vegetation restricting the water flow through that ditch? Has it got that tall?
I, I don't know, it's probably been. It, it's been a couple months since I've, I've been over there to look at that, but it is, it is just nearly dead flat through there. From, from the west side of Laurel Springs Drive where those pipes intakes are till you get all the way to the South Creek Drainage, I think there's less than two inches of fall between the two. So, yes, those pipes that are under Laurel Springs Drive right now, they're literally sitting half full of water. And, you know, the riprap open waterway downstream of that, I think at some point after it was built, they got saturated and, and rose somewhat in elevation, so we, we definitely can make improvements there, one way or another.
Anyone else like to speak?
I got one from Michael Bragg. I live at 213. I live right beside the Kellys. I probably, besides Mr. Carroll, I think I've lived there about going on 13 years now, and I've seen it flood, I think, about four times. I've got pictures of Hurricane Matthew when it, the whole cul-de-sac was flooded. I mean, it's, it's kind of like, wow, I mean, you know, it's, when you see it, it's like, it's kind of overwhelming, you know, that you wouldn't think something like that would happen so quick, but it does. I'm in favor with everybody else. I, I don't want the open ditch, but I just, we want it fixed. I mean, especially for the Kellys. I mean, they, they're just, they're in the low, low lot, and I mean, if, when it floods, I can stand in my second story and watch the, watch the water come around, go around their house, and then find its way back to the ditch. And it just, it's, it just, it's kind of, I mean, it's sad. I mean, to watch their house just be overtaken by water and, but I just, I just, you know, want it taken care of. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Randy, who was the developer?
That's what I was gonna ask.
Was that David Coombs?
Do you remember who developed the subdivision? I don't write on the end. I don't think.
Was it Johnny Hammond and Gilly? I think they did all that, that last development, but they had, they alternated lots, Gilly Hammond, Gilly Hammond, Gilly Hammond.
I, I did mine. I don't know who developed the subdivision there.
Do you recall, Louise? Any of those names sound familiar?
For some reason, I thought Coombs was a developer.
Well, he was the developer of Par Drive and Birdie Drive upstream, which has obviously contributed to this, compounded this problem. I, I think at the time, this subdivision was built and laid out, we already had in place our stormwater management or, or stormwater ordinance and the requirements of it, and it was most likely built to those standards. But, you know, now we have to go 20 years later and look upstream. We got Par Drive, Birdie Drive, Audrey Court, and one other street that I, the name escapes me right now, that are almost fully developed. And as Kevin had pointed out, I think at the last council meeting, they've since, they've, they've changed the drainage equation for this area and are contributors to what we're experiencing today.
I do have one little question. One of my neighbors down the street mentioned to me several months ago that the whole subdivision, that, that lower part of that subdivision was building what's called basically a waterfowl area or a watershed area. And, you know, I was told it's a 500, 500-year-foot flood plain when I bought the house, or, of course, certainly didn't anticipate any of this coming up, but, you know, I just wondered, was the town, was the town aware of this? Is that area considered a waterfowl area or a watershed area?
I, I can't answer that question, Tina, I don't know. Do you remember when?
It is in a watershed area.
Well, yeah, all of Nashville is in a watershed area, but what he's asking is, is it any type of blue stream area or marsh?
Well, she said it was like marsh for, considered up to be a marsh for waterfowl.
With you?
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Council, do you have any questions?
What was Stocks Engineering's recommendation? My understanding is after, if four were rejected, number two would be their recommendation.
Well, option one, as Kevin and Mike Stocks both point out, there's no sense spending $30,000 and getting essentially no improvement whatsoever. Is that option one? Alternative one.
Seventy-five.
Seventy-five thousand. Alternative two, like Kevin said, would, would be some improvement. But again, it's $316,000, and if you're gonna spend that money and only get 40% improvement, you might as well go to option four, put another $100,000 with it and get nearly 100% improvement, is, is the way he, he stated it. Stocks Engineering, when, when they looked at it from a performance standpoint and a cost standpoint, their recommendation is alternative four.
But that's the, is that the open ditch?
That is the open waterway, yes, mayor. It, it performs the best and has a lower cost than putting everything in a big pipe.
But how would we protect the children, you know, out there with the big ditch?
Yeah.
Right near the property.
There, there would be, there would be an open waterway with it. It's the most economical way the engineers say to convey stormwater is with an open waterway. And I've heard that from other engineers too.
I thought we had, I thought we had said something about two being an option the last time we spoke about this.
We did.
Am I, am I right?
Yeah, I have it marked.
That's what I was thinking, we thought about two as being the best option because we, we eliminated the open ditch the last time we spoke about it.
That's what I was thinking.
Yeah.
But all, you know, comparing, this is, this is what Kevin and Michael had said, Mike Stocks, at the last meetings that I was at with them, that option, option number two, which basically adds another, replaces the 24-inch pipe between 209 and 215 Windy Oak Drive with a 40, 48-inch diameter pipe. Then it lowers Windy Oak Drive by about two feet, so there'll be a dip in the street. That's in the event that more water comes that can go into that pipe. It's got an over-the-land route to flow. And then it continues on between Windy Oak and Laurel Springs and replaces the pipe that's there, again, I believe, with another 48-inch pipe. And then it puts twin 24s under Laurel Springs Drive, or I guess, I'm sorry, it doesn't do anything different under Laurel Springs Drive. From, from there all the way to the South Creek Open Ditch, no difference. That, that's all left the same.
Doesn't it say something, though, about increasing the potential flood event for Laurel Springs? Or am I reading that wrong? It says peak flows at Laurel Springs for the five, 10, and 100-year flood events increase by 15, 28, and 51. What is this CPS?
Yeah. So, my, my recollection, again, if, the engineer's recommendation is for number four.
I guess I wanted to hear from Kevin on two and three, because those seem to alleviate the problems in Windy Oak and in Par Drive, but have the potential to cause problems at Laurel Springs. And I just wanted to see exactly what the extent of that would be.
Yeah, unfortunately, neither Mike Stocks or Kevin Barnett were able to make meeting tonight. To get an answer to those questions, probably have to wait till the next council meeting.
Randy, on page 6-1, the conclusions and recommendations on the last period, that should property owners not be on board with alternative four, alternative two would be the next recommended alternative. Alternative, alternative two would be replacing the 24-inch diameter with the 48-inch pipes.
Thank you, Louise, for bringing that out.
That's what I was thinking, to talk about.
So that would keep the Windy Oak homes from flooding. Alternative two, because that's gonna get the water away from their home.
Well, you, you're gonna have 48-inch pipes, pipe.
It says it would bring the Par Drive up to a 10-year rain event, the Windy Oak up to a five-year, and it reduces the 100-year for Par Drive. But I still wanna know what that does to Laurel Springs.
Right.
Well, I think, Kate, as you had read, it, it, given, given rain events, it could make it worse.
Right.
Downstream of Laurel Springs Drive, tell us.
I guess I'm just confused because in that description that Louise was just reading, it says that, something about the Laurel Springs being a non-benefitter. And I just, I wanna know if that means that they just don't benefit from it or that it actually makes it worse.
We probably need just to wait and have some dialogue with them, don't you think?
I need, yeah, I think I need to hear from Kevin.
I think that would be better, because we want to do the right thing.
Yeah, we, we can have this on the October 29.
Okay, why don't we just table it till then?
It doesn't hurt that it doesn't hit.
Well, we, we know, we know that, we know that the residents don't want five.
Right.
We know they don't want five, so we just take.
They don't want four.
They don't want four.
They all want five.
They all want.
They don't want four, that's right. So we could just eliminate four altogether and start working on the rest of them.
Did you guys want to hear from the finance director regarding?
Yes.
Yes, yes, we would like to hear that.
However alternative you decide to go with?
Well, so you've got a few options. If the budget remains the same for the rest of the fiscal year, you'll have about $75,000 in the stormwater reserves that you could use to get the project started. The rest, and it depends on which option that you choose, could either come from fund balance or you have the option of, you know, possibly making the tough decision to potentially raise a stormwater fee in future. And that's something that you might wanna look at, considering you've got this project and several other very large projects that, that are out there in the town that need to be done, so.
I didn't hear you raise what? Raise what?
The stormwater fee.
Okay, Ryan has $30 a year.
That's right, ma'am, and it, it generates about $140,000 of revenue annually, so not quite enough to, to get a project like this done.
I don't think we need to raise the stormwater fee for the citizens not having any problems.
What are the other projects that you see on the horizon for stormwater?
Indian Trail is, is another one. There are several, probably Randy knows more about the projects than I do.
Most of the other ones that I have in mind are smaller, they're probably all under $30,000. You know, when Lee and I talked about, right, right now, there's an open waterway that goes through the Indian Trail subdivision. And about every 12 to 15 years, we're, we're spending upwards to $20,000 to straighten it back out and re-ripwrap the sides because they scour and wash. And we were thinking, maybe it's time we just concrete the sides, but we wouldn't be able to do all that in one year. So there are like four segments, and we were thinking doing a segment a year until we get from, you know, where it begins till retention pond or the pond in that subdivision. So I did reach out to the Golden Leaf Foundation and, because, you know, we got Golden Leaf money for the Elm Street Storm Sewer Project, but that was shortly after a hurricane. And what I heard from Casey Ginsburg is, at this time, that disaster recovery grant program, which is part of the Golden Leaf Foundation's funding arsenal, doesn't have any money. It will again, if there's, again, a major disaster in our area, it will be funded again, and we can, we can apply at that time. But, you know, hopefully, we don't have another major hurricane in a year in a long, long time. That's the only way that funding source would be funded again. I did reach out to Patsy McGee with Nash County. She's, knows a lot about grant funding sources, and she couldn't think of any, any for a stormwater project offhand either, unless, of course, it was some type of innovative demonstration-type project that could be upheld as a model for other areas. And, you know, we're not looking at doing anything real inventive here. We just wanna get the water through the neighborhood so it doesn't cause a problem on either side. That's pretty much been the purpose of stormwater drainage since the beginning. Nothing innovative about that.
Randy, what would be, what would be the cost factor if, if we went with five with the riprap in, in the drainage ditch? If we replaced that with concrete walls, where the water would have nothing to restrict it from flowing out, no vegetation to grow through it? How much of an increase in cost would that be compared to riprap?
That, that would be taking it from a pipe to an open waterway, which is concrete sides and a bottom.
Right.
And, and maybe a nice decorative fence, some type on top of it, you know. It would still have to be open on either end.
Right, uh-huh.
It would be less than the option for the cost that they came up with for number five.
It would be less?
Somewhere between four and five, most likely.
I would like to see them get a cost on that for us.
Any other questions?
So, for funding, it would be to be fund balance or some kind of grant?
I don't, Louise, I don't think we're gonna find a grant, I, I truly don't.
So is this enterprise fund balance or?
It's, it's stormwater fees. It's in the general fund, and like I say, we do generate about a hundred and forty thousand dollars annually in stormwater fees. Forty thousand of that just comes right off the top for a salary. There's one employee in that department. So you've got about a hundred thousand dollars annually to work with. So, you know, you could use the fees, and then the rest would be subsidized by the general fund. Or, like I say, you know, you could potentially look at raising the fee in the future.
But those funds are also used to maintain all the, all the ditches in town, right?
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
So, that money's spread out over a lot of entities.
And through the years, you know, the town picked up responsibility for quite a few waterways. And goodness, they don't all need maintenance, costly maintenance every year, but they do. Louise, you have one in your bag.
I was gonna say, I can reference one in my yard, that rip wrap is all over the place. It's, you know, and I have a tree that's getting ready to fall because it has been inundated by floodwaters. So I understand what you're talking about. Mainta, maintaining is very important.
It is.
Well, do I need a motion for us to table this?
Yeah, and if you get it, would like to the October twenty-ninth meeting?
I think.
Twenty-eight.
I'm sorry, twenty-eight.
So that we can hear from the engineers.
Right, we obviously wanna resolve this as soon as possible. We wanna help the homeowners, but we need some answers from the engineers.
So do I hear a motion that we table it?
Some of it.
So, all those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you so much, and I thank the citizens for coming out tonight, too. Tequila, would you come up to the front, please?
Mayor, before, before we get with Tequila, make sure the citizens understand why we're tabling this and what we're, what are we waiting on, 'cause several of them asked when we're gonna start, what you're gonna do, and we haven't told them that we're not gonna start, but we won't have a start date. But we're tabling it because we still have unanswered questions.
We, we don't know what's gonna work for us the best.
One of them was going to be here tonight.
That's right.
So they could ask these questions, but that didn't work out.
But we want to get it fixed as rapidly as possible, too.
Oh, yeah.
This is to recognize Tequila Austin for obtaining her public librarian certification for the state of North Carolina, and she is our librarian. If you use the library, you all know her and her friendly face over there all the time. The North Carolina Public Librarian Certification Commission was formed in nineteen thirty-six to set minimum standards for public librarians to protect and maintain public library resources to assure professional management and administration of library services to meet the personal requirements for state aid administered by the State Library of North Carolina and to guarantee the best possible public library service to all North Carolinians. Tequila Austin has earned this prestigious public librarian certification through the North Carolina Department of National and Cultural Resources Division of State Library. So please join the council in congratulating Tequila Austin on earning this designation. We're very proud of you. Keep up the good work. Thank you so much, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Tequila, you've been, since you've been with us, how long now?
December tenth of the year.
December tenth of the year, and I think this, you've, you've come across three grants, four grants for us already?
Yes, yes, I have.
Can you find one for stormwater? But I, I, I think she's done an outstanding job.
She has.
She's applied for four grants since she's been here. We saved the taxpayers a lot of money and, and kept our library up to the level that it is now, and, and I'd like to thank you for what you're doing.
We thank you very much. Thank you. Our next item under our new business is the Finance Director's Report on Revenues Today. And a concern when the town council adopted the town's FY twenty-one operating budget together was, would the projected revenues be realized and received, especially sale tax, property tax, and utility payments? Finance Director Samantha Sanchez has been tracking the town's revenue and will give the council a report tonight, so we'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. So, the first quarter of fiscal year is now behind us, so yes, we did enter the fiscal year with quite a bit of uncertainty. But I am pleased to report, I'm pleased to report, that our tax revenue is actually ahead of target. So in fact, our property taxes are a hundred and fifteen thousand above what we anticipated. Our sales tax revenue, we've only received one month of that so far, but it's actually ahead of where we were last fiscal year by fourteen thousand. All of our other major revenue sources are right on target. Those include the stormwater fees, sanitation fees, MSD taxes, they're right on target, what we budgeted. Couple things we're gonna keep an eye out on this year. One's gonna be our interest earnings. Basically, we're earning nothing right now, so I don't see that changing anytime in the next few months. So, we'll just have to keep an eye out on that. And also, our power funds, the state did cut a, cut us a little bit, just by about twelve thousand dollars. So that's gonna be a little bit under budget. So as far as expenditures are concerned, so far, it's pretty early to tell, so, but right now, we're still right on target. General fund's looking really good. However, I do just wanna let you know, just, just the, I do anticipate we're gonna need some additional funds in the Water and Sewer Fund to cover sewer surcharges. They, they're, they're, they're pretty astronomical right now. I think it probably, we're gonna need another couple hundred thousand dollars in there by the end of the year, so.
Can you just explain that one a little bit more?
So our sewer surcharges, it's a, it's a bill that we paid to the city of Rocky Mount. It's part of our Water and Sewer Bill that we paid to them. In the recent past, it was, you know, anywhere between thirty and forty thousand dollars per month. That's what we used to pay them. Our first bill for the year was a hundred, over a hundred thousand dollars. We had a huge rain event that does cause a, that caused a large increase. I think we're gonna have another large bill related to another high-water event. And so I do believe that we're gonna need some additional funds in there.
Is this part of I and I?
It's part of that project that we're looking at, but the results of that project, as, as far as any, any, you know, effect that it's gonna have on the stormwater fee, I, I think that's gonna be several months out. So I do still believe we're gonna need some, some additional funds in that.
Yeah, a lot of, a lot of the additional expense we're incurring with the city of Rocky Mount has to do with flow, and it does go back to I and I. And I, I don't know if you guys remember, but Lee and the guys have, have pretty much gotten through the whole town with smoke testing, and they did find a lot of open areas where water can get in, and most all those have been fixed. But I, I think where a lot of that I and I is coming from that we are experiencing is the actual service lines from the sewer main up to the house. And, you know, in some neighborhoods where we, we know we have a problem because we have a lift station that services that area, and it takes two, three days after a good rain event for that thing to catch up, we may have to go in and just slip line service lines in order to button it up and tighten it up. It's, I, I, part of this inventory asset assessment that Mac Gay and Associates has submitted the, the grant application for, that would help us determine and, and kinda pinpoint where this is and see. You know, some of the surcharges that Sam's talking about also have to do with the strength of the sewerage that we're sending. You know, they, they sample it for BODs, CBODs, suspended solids, and five different components. And we, in turn, we have sewer surcharges that we charge our customers, too. The, the restaurants, the cafeterias, some of the large users such as the prison and the county jail, to name a few. Unfortunately, we identified about forty-two more places in town that we need to look at if they should pay or not pay sewer surcharges. And the way it was explained to me that that was done is, we actually put a composite sampler in their sewer line and sample it, send it to the lab, have that analyzed, you know, for all five of these components, and then based upon that strength, we take what we get charged from Rocky Mount and in turn, charge back to that business or that sewer user. Lee tells me today that his guys went around with a consultant that, who's a retired environmental compliance officer for the city of Rocky Mount, and, what did you say, Lee? There are only three of those that we can actually put a sampler in and sample because they were never set up with the proper infrastructure. Let me, let me take that word proper back. With a manhole that they discharge into all by themselves where we can sample. So, Lee was picking that person, that consultant's brain, and the way Rocky Mount does it is, if you're one of these businesses that likely have surcharges, you know, such as the fast food restaurants, and we physically can't sample you, set up a flat fee where they pay every month. That would get us more revenue to pay what we're currently paying Rocky Mount in, in surcharges. So it's, it's kind of a complicated, it, it comes at more than one direction, Louise, than just I and I.
Let me ask you about the meter on Old Carriage Road.
Yeah, I was gonna ask.
That has been installed and?
It is installed, it is running. We don't have any data from that yet. They set it up to measure in fifteen-minute increments, which is the same way the city of Rocky Mount's meter reads in fifteen-minute increments. So we should good, we should good have, we should have good apples-to-apples comparison on a monthly basis for the three-month trial period. Now, I don't hope for high rain events, but Lee's kinda hoping for one so we can see how they perform in a high rain event. But, you know, at, at the end of that timeframe, we will get that report from Wooton Company on, on if the meters are synced and, and line with, you know, each other, or if they're way off.
What was Rocky Mount's taken, the meter?
Um, they were taken a little back by it, you know. And what I told Brenton Bent, when he and I talked, we, we, we feel as if it's not accurate. But in order to be able to engage them in a good discussion with it, we had to have good solid data, as Lee had pointed out. And, and that's what we're doing, so.
And we're about a month into it?
No, no.
Not, not two weeks?
Maybe a week, week and a half. Yeah.
So just getting back to the surcharges, are these comparable to rain events that have happened in the past and charges that we would see in the past?
So, I haven't in the recent past seen a bill this high.
Okay. So maybe not?
So therein lies the reason why we're questioning Rocky Mount's meter readings.
Okay.
Because we hadn't changed anything, and it just went up for no reason at all.
Well, I'm sure there was a reason why it went up, but, you know, we, we think, Larry, it's probably due to the recalibration of Rocky Mount's meter, which happened in February.
Okay.
I have a question, Sam, regarding the property tax collected so far. Do you have a rough idea of what our collection rate looks like?
So for fiscal year nineteen twenty, it was, it's about ninety-eight percent, maybe a little bit higher. So I believe in the year before, it was ninety-eight point seven. So it did dip just ever so slightly, but, um.
And we, for this year so far, this fiscal year we're into, twenty twenty-one, we've collected two point two million, budgeted two point one million, so we're exceeding budget. But I'm sure the bulk is coming in, paying in the early part of the year, July, August.
Yes, ma'am, these are just our, these are just our revenues, so this is just what we build for. We won't collect those taxes, probably the bulk of those, until December, January.
Okay, so the projection, we don't have any projections on that, we don't know.
We don't.
We, we are hoping.
I don't anticipate it, it, to, to dip any, any further, like I say.
Okay, we know a lot of people in forbearance, and so we have to take that into consideration.
Yes, we usually get notice, notifications of those, those types of things, forbearances and.
Your money came in lower? It's usually about a hundred and forty-five thousand, what was it?
Yeah, about a hundred and thirty, hundred, in the hundred and thirties. It dipped about twelve thousand.
Okay, our, our most recent project is Cross Street. Are we slurring that or asphalt?
Slurry steel.
Okay.
Any other question?
The calculation we had for property taxes, we had about thirty-eight thousand outstanding from nineteen twenty?
Yes.
Is that about the same?
Yeah, it's about, it's about the same. We may have collected a couple of thousand more since then.
Any other question?
In your packet, I did include a report, probably there toward the back, that tells you. A vet printed that off for me, just, just to aid real property as of twenty nineteen.
Thank you very much. Any other questions for Samantha? Thank you so much, we appreciate it, your update and your report. Let's move on to seven C. This is concerning the Aviation Avenue subdivision. It's a request for proposal, a proposed final major subdivision approval of an eleven-lot major subdivision off Aviation Avenue, zoning district R four, which is high-density. And this parcel contains approximately one and eight tenths acres and identified by the Nash County Tax Parcel Number is three eight oh one two oh nine oh one eight five nine. Now, all of you understand that code. So, the staff recommends that we approve this, and the planning board recommends approval also of the FP twenty twenty dash oh one. So this is the final plat.
First, I just had a quick question.
What?
Finish the sidewalks, like what?
Yeah, but it is a requirement.
So what I'm saying is, if we approve this, is there anything that we have to hold over them to make sure that sidewalks do actually occur?
The, may, well, the final plat cannot be signed off until, until it meets the requirement.
Okay, so it will not be signed off until the sidewalks are in place?
Correct.
Now, on this sketch here, are the sidewalks noted? I don't, I just don't see where they are exactly.
Yes, if you look on the Aviation Avenue part, it's kinda tiny, has, they set aside an eight-foot-wide sidewalk easement along lots, along the lot lines, it's right above Aviation Avenue.
The word Aviation.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's pretty small.
Okay, now I have it.
So it's along, so they have three lots, lots one through three. They have them, so it'd be from the right-of-way to along, to the property line, from property, from the property line to the right-of-way, as is noted in ten, in number ten, on the left-hand side of your paper.
Okay. And is this the normal course of business of doing this final approval without having any, any of the, the final things in place? Is that, it's really just the signature at the end that holds them to?
Yes, and see, what has happened before, they had a construction plat that had all eleven lots listed on there, and so they're coming back for their final, because the first, they had first, well, five out of eleven lots were done as a final plat after the construction plat, and so they had to get a final plat. So, five of the lots already developed, so now they come back needing lots. The remaining six lots approved.
Okay.
As a final, and they had to include, you know, show the sidewalks on there from lots one through eleven.
Okay, so all the sidewalks will be in place everywhere where they were supposed to be?
Yes.
Okay.
Sherry, I had a question about, between lots three and four. Is that a road that goes in? It's not a road there yet, but proposed if the back portion is developed. And if the back portion is going to be developed, then they will have to come back with a master plan. Okay, so we don't have any idea about what's? No, no, this is just for the lots along Aviation. Okay. But that's an anticipated street.
I think it says sewer easement on it.
Yes, a sewer easement right now, but it possibly, you know, an anticipated street if the back portion is developing.
Sure, a question for you. When Todd Spikes was at the planning board meeting last time, you know, obviously, he needs to file and record this final plat of survey for six to eleven before he can sell the lots. And he, so in order to do that, the town will have to sign off on this final plat and it be recorded at the courthouse, and none of the homes will be built yet, nor will the sidewalk be put into place yet when that happens. I don't know if this gives you any, any assurance at all, but Todd Spikes was at the planning board meeting a week ago.
He's here.
Oh.
Well, I'm here.
Well, I'll let you guys come up and talk for yourselves.
I'm not calling into question your honor in any way. This is a general question I'm having for how things are done with all people and all developers. And, and while, you know, we can trust you, and I know that you're gonna do the right thing, I'd like to have some. And, and while, you know, we can trust you and I know that you're gonna do the right thing, I'd like to have something in place for future development where we actually get what we need before any final sign offs are done.
Well, just, you know, our prior conversation, when it was first submitted. Um, there was no like drawings for sidewalks because at that time, there was no ordinance, I guess, for sidewalks. And then the council approved it at the time to add sidewalks. And um, so we went ahead with the five lots. And as I had told the planning department, that because it's a existing street, the right of ways vary a little bit on the, on the roads. Um, as far as the sidewalks, they'll vary a little bit as far as like the distance off of the curb and. Um, I know stocks engineering recommended, this isn't necessarily what we have to do, they recommended the curb and go up against. I mean, the, I keep saying curb, the sidewalk goes up against the back of the curb and. Um, but it don't have to be that way. But our original discussion was that I could just put the sidewalks in as we um. You know, go along and before we finish the last house, I guess.
Okay.
So have you put the sidewalks in for the houses you completed already?
No, sir, not yet.
Maybe to answer your question, in our subdivision ordinance, we require a developer to put up a performance bond.
Okay.
And then that guarantees the infrastructure that they're proposing to be built, be built.
Okay, so the bond is not released until all of these are met?
Well, that, that, that's a way of getting around uh filing and recording the final plat of survey so the lots can be sold. Yet the construction hasn't been completed, the water, the sewer, the streets, the storm sewer, none of that has, has been put into place. That performance bond guarantees that. And typically it's ten percent of what the projected cost of the development is. Or they can give an irrevocable letter of credit. Uh, something new that I discovered since I've come to North Carolina is that developers oftentimes hire contractors to do that infrastructure. And require them to put forth a performance bond, and then they will sign that performance bond over to the town or to the city. Therein relieving themselves of having to go to a surety company, get a performance bond of their own.
So have we collected a bond?
I actually found that he did submit a check to the finance office um right back when this project first got started. I think the check was for seven thousand dollars. I found it in the safe. It was never cashed. But so yes, he did his part. He did put up the bond.
Oh my goodness.
We just never cashed it.
We gotta check, we don't even know about cash.
Any other questions for him?
But I, I mean, you know, for what a word's worth, I, I mean, we are putting sidewalks there. And don't, the, really the only reason I was waiting till the end, I wanted the sidewalks to look as uniformed as possible.
Yeah.
And because, like I said, the variance because of the existence street of the setbacks. Um, I just kind of wanted to see how we needed to run them where they all kind of looked uniform. That, that was the only reason I didn't put it in. I didn't want to put it in a certain distance off to start with. Then we had to bring it back, you know, I, I wanted it all to look as best uniformed as possible.
Yeah, I understand that.
Yeah, cause if you pull them at different times, you'll have a different texture on them.
Right, right. And I mean, that's.
Best to run it all at one time.
That was my idea anyway of, of the situation.
Thank you so much. Any other questions?
Mayor, I have a question for Randy. It's not related to Mister, uh, to this project, but in, in general. The development that has taken place and is taking place off of Aviation Avenue, are there any um? Any data, is there any data related to potential traffic issues? Because that is the only access in and out of Aviation and the Davis Farm, the um, of course, the houses that Mister. That Todd is getting ready to build as well. I'm just thinking about as people are going and coming in and out of Aviation, and the more people that we put back there, the more traffic there's gonna be. And it's coming right off into Washington Street, which is already pretty heavily traveled.
I'm not aware of any. The DOC may have some traffic counts that they've liked it off Aviation in the past. I can check with Bobby Lieberman, but uh, you know, all, all it takes is a phone call and we can have a traffic counter put out there for a day or two or. And, and we can get some data if you would like to see that happen.
But once we have the data, what can be done? I guess to, to fix that. We are changing it so that we do require, you know, traffic studies and things like that for larger developments. How, how do we, how do we make sure that this doesn't happen where we have? Accidents or, or people in danger because of the only one way in, one way out?
I mean, there's no other potential um access to that property.
Well, Aviation Drive back where the lift station was, now that it's not there, you know, we, we could put, we could extend the road to North Lumber. And then Lloyd Park could take that traffic to First Street, which would then go up to a controlled traffic device. There, there's not much right of way, maybe fifteen feet at most. We'd have to acquire property to get through there, obviously. But we could give Aviation uh Avenue another route out. And Lee and I have talked about that several times uh with Kevin Barnell, and it can be done. I, I don't have a cost estimate for you on that. Uh, we certainly can work on one and come up with one. But you know, even if we can't get enough right of way through there for a two-way, you know, once you get back that far, maybe it's a one-way to get to North Lumber. At least it's another way out.
Correct.
Cause I think most people are still gonna choose to access Davis Farms and, you know, this development from, from Washington Street. And it's only in the morning or the evening when they can't get out, would they choose to go the other way and, and potentially take a one-way route?
Any other questions? If not, do I hear a motion that we approve the, uh, the, this uh final plat on Aviation Avenue?
Second.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Now let's move on to our next item, which is the CGI Communications. And they have invited the town of Nashville to participate in a cost-free decorative street banner program. I'll read a little summary of it so you'll understand what it is. The CGI Communications would like to enter into an agreement with the town of Nashville for a cost-free banner program. CGI will provide twenty-five free banners branded with the artwork of the town's choosing. Banners are designed exclusively for Nashville to showcase the community's economic vitality and the support of local businesses. The agreement includes a three-year commitment of banner display, a letter of support for local businesses to advertise with CGI. And identification of and access to the preferred pole sites for proper banner placement. There is no minimum or threshold of a sponsor, of sponsorships for this program. If no businesses participate, the cost to the town is still free. The staff recommends approval of this partnership and agreement with CGI and the MSD Advisory Board. Also recommends approval of the partnership and agreement with CGI. So the uh, we have attachments that I'm sure you've all looked at. Are there any questions or discussion about this?
Will there be any conflict with our Christmas decorations?
I asked, I asked that question to Sherri when I first came in about Christmas decorations. For this year, I guess we, if we chose to, to go with it, we would just wait till after Christmas. But then CGI next year would come back in and remove them. Would remove the, the banners and so we could put our Christmas decorations up for the main downtown area?
What can happen is you can wait to um put up the new banners after Christmas. And then that, yes, they can come in and take them down.
I'm talking next year.
Next year.
Yeah. And, and she also, she also told me that rather than twenty-five banners, it would be twenty-eight banners really, cause the three for the, three for the town. Fire Department, Police Department, the Town Hall is in addition to the twenty-five. So we're talking about twenty-eight banners.
I just want to make sure there's no conflict with Christmas.
Right, I, I was concerned about that also.
Did we ever get clarification on whether we can constrain the poles to the MSD?
When I talked to her, actually, uh, when I talked to Nikki Carroll, um, she did explain that. We will have a um, sales representative to come out and, and reach out to us in regards to um. Different people who they will contact based on the video program. And so if those, it could be businesses outside, that's outside MSD, if they want to um purchase a banner. They can place it on one of the poles inside the MSD district.
Okay.
Mayor, being the, being there will be no conflict with the Christmas decoration, I'd like to share to follow up on that before we go forward. But other than that, if, if there is no conflict, I would, I would move that we go ahead and proceed with this process.
Do I hear a second?
A second.
All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Our next um item is um, uh, our advisory board appointments. Laura Wood of Corner Coffee Cafe and Donna Wood of Nash County Government. Located in the Municipal Service District has submitted an application for appointment to the Nashville Downtown Strong Advisory. The appointment is set to expire on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. The staff recommends appointing Laura Wood to the Nashville Downtown Strong Advisory Board. Um, and also the two of those and Donna Wood. And do I have any discussion or a motion that we uh receive those to the board?
We're expanding the board, expanding.
I don't think it had as many as it needed members.
And I think even after this, there's plenty of room for members.
You can have up to eleven. I think we have seven right now.
Right.
We can take it to nine.
I move that we accept these two.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor, let it be um noted by saying aye.
Aye.
All those um in favor, well, it carries, the motion carries. They will be two good um representatives on the board, I do believe. Okay, our next item is our renewal water purchase contract with the city of Rocky Mount. So I'm gonna read the summary for that uh for our um people here tonight. Our forty-year water purchase contract with the city of Rocky Mount has expired. And we have a renewal contract for consideration. The renewal contract is nearly the same as the old contract. The water purchase volume stays the same in section two A, page three, with a minimum average daily volume of three hundred and fifty thousand gallons. Which includes fifty thousand we purchased and resaled to Nash County. And a maximum average daily volume of seven hundred and fifty thousand gallons. Our average daily volume from the city of Rocky Mount is around five hundred ten thousand gallons. The purchase price of the water stays the same. The city of Rocky Mount, uh, well, the same, this, the section to be page four, at the lowest wholesale rate. The city of Rocky Mount charges to its other customers who purchase water for resale. Which is currently two dollars and thirty-four cents per cubic feet of water or seven hu- hundred forty-eight gallons of water. The manager was able to get the city of Rocky Mount to give us a sixty-day notice of rate increase. Its rate increases are effective July the first, if there is one. He wanted ninety days so we would know of a rate increase while we were preparing our annual budget. The old contract had no advance notice of a water rate increase. And we would receive a letter from the city of Rocky Mount two weeks before the new fiscal year. The water service area between the city of Rocky Mount and the town remains the same too. The water service area map is the last attached page to this agenda report, and we had all that information. The contract does allow for modifications to the contract in section three C, page five. So if we needed a larger volume of water over the forty-year term of this agreement, it can be requested and obtained. Likewise, if we want to change in the water service area, it can be requested too. So Randy, you wanna talk with us about this or we basically covered it, I think?
Yes, you have.
Our attorney looked at this and is okay with it?
Mark Edwards uh has had it for a week plus. Um, I haven't heard anything back from him, so I'm assuming he's good with it.
Okay.
Randy, excuse me.
Go ahead. I'm just, uh, I really, when I read this, liked the part where you requested an advance notice if we were gonna have a increase. Because that certainly will make a di- difference in preparing our budget.
Because in the past, we usually found out what, the day before, the week before, or the week after.
When, when we did get the letter this week, this time around, they gave it to Sam and she's like, we already set our budget.
I have a question, Randy. In one of your reports, you mentioned the fact that, okay, we have a seven hundred and fifty thousand, that's our max number of gallons. With new developments coming online, is that gonna affect that number?
At some point it will, Louise, that, you know, when, when the growth.
We have more developments than ever, you know, this last year.
Yeah. But when Lee and I looked at that and we talked about it, we thought we were good probably for the next five to seven years. Even with what we are hearing may, may develop, most of it, a lot of it is just residential water use, which, you know, isn't a tremendous amount of water use per day. And we still have our three wells that are producing well. Um, I don't know, if you had a chance to read through the contract, in the event all of our wells will dry, we can get one hundred percent of our needs from Rocky Mount for a twelve-month period. And I think that's designed to give us an opportunity to come up with Plan B to cover some of our others. Or to renegotiate this contract for it to be one hundred percent, which I don't think Rocky Mount wants to do that. But, you know, we can probably negotiate that if we had to.
Some, Randy, sometime before you came on board with us, we were talking about digging another, digging another well out on uh. Fifty-eight Golden River Wilson, out that way. Uh, have you had any consideration, you and uh, can't think of the name now, but anyway.
We, we haven't talked about that.
We haven't talked about looking at another well site?
Yeah, we, we haven't at this point. Um, I don't know, Lee was doing some analysis on what it costs to drill a well and maintain it. Uh, on an annual basis for, and, and equate that to a per gallon charge to what we can buy it for. And, you know, it, it, it kind of takes the excitement out of drilling a new well.
Randy, I thought we had six wells.
We, we do. Actually, we got seven. We only have three in line.
Okay, so we have three that are duds?
Well, well number four, which is by Clayton Homes, uh, because of water quality issues. And, you know, that's the one that, when you run it, it gets a lot of turbulence in the water. We believe there's a crack in the casing, so that well needs to be recased. But uh, the, 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 the quality of that well, the water quality is such that, you know, Lee and I really questioned whether it was worthwhile to rehab that one. Again, for the volume of water that we're getting from it and because it still has some other water. It's, it's not the best quality water as some of our other wells. And then we, we have another well by the old school that's not in use anymore. That's well number three. Well number two is by Pratt and Mill. And do we still use that one, Lee?
We don't.
We don't. And then of course, uh, we have well number seven, which is going out toward um, the DOC, the prison. We have well number six, where's that one at?
Birchwood.
Birchwood. And well number five, which is by the cemetery. Those are our three main wells.
So none of the one, none of the other four is, is rehabilitable?
They, they probably are, but um, the, the quality of water we were getting from them was the primary reason why we stopped using them. High magnesium, which is, you know, if your, if your toilet bowl gets that black stuff in it over, over a short period of time, that's, that's the magnesium. It's, it's not real desirable. I mean, it's, it's still not that water, but we have wells that have better quality, so that's why we choose to use them.
I just don't want us to get to a position where we're dependent on Rocky Mount.
Because during Hurricane Floyd, our wells sustained us, you know, when there were water problems.
Yeah.
That's, we depended on them.
Yeah. So, we, we get into budget for FY twenty-two, you know, we can have these discussions and, you know, we can show you the pros and cons of drilling a new well. And I agree with you, from, from, from a strategic standpoint, uh, it would be better to have, be able to cover your own usage. Than be dependent upon somebody whose water supply goes completely underwater when, when the tar river floods.
That's true.
The water that's provided to the prison, um, Randy, is that our water or is that Rocky Mount water? Water we're buying from Rocky Mount?
It, it's a combination. I mean.
Pass through.
We, we have the water vault out by the John Deere dealer on, on Eastern Avenue. And as that water comes into town, our wells mix with it. So it's a combination of what, what they receive out there, which would be, you know, forty percent Rocky Mount water and, and sixty percent our well water.
So the Rocky Mount water, when it comes in, when it, when is it checked for quality?
Daily.
But I guess that my question is here, it says once it's delivered, it's on us, not. But I guess that my question is here, it says, once it's delivered, it's on us, not them.
Yeah, they don't guarantee the quality of water once it hits our system.
Right, so is it checked prior to? Yes? Okay, daily. So my next question is, in this contract, it says that if there was an inaccuracy in the reading, that it would basically allow us to get the prior six months corrected? What does our previous contract say? Because we have a long time of that one being inaccurate, correct?
Well, that, you're talking to sewer meter versus the water meter, Kate?
Okay, so I guess I am.
Yeah.
So we don't have any inaccuracies coming from our water? It's strictly our sewer?
Correct.
Okay. All right. And six months seems sufficient, since we haven't had any problems?
Well, the red flags go off within a six-month period.
Okay.
That's why we felt that was impatient.
Okay. My next question is on page four, on B. We just have some language that doesn't work with each other. So one of these say that we need to get payment due, not less than 10, but no more than 20 days after the date of the statement is delivered in accordance with Rocky Mount's schedule. And then the very next sentence, it says, any invoice that isn't paid before the 20th day of the month. So it either needs to be both of those, is the 20th of the month, or we need to just say after the 20th day, after the statement was delivered? Do you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Okay. There's also some other language in here, like, any dispute shall be resolved by the city manager or her designee, and the mayor or her designee. And if not so resolved, then these other provisions will apply. So I guess my question is, what happens if the city manager or the city mayor? Oh, no, so this is for the town. Okay, now that answers my own question, I just misread that. When it comes to modification of the contract, it says that either party, upon written notice, can agree to reduce or increase the water. So my fear or question is, what if the city comes and says, we'd like to reduce your water supply? What happens?
Well, I think we have to agree to that before they can do that.
That's in here, that says that they can do that, though. It says either party can come forward and either reduce or increase the water supply.
In that case, then, we would have to crank up our wells and cover the difference, and possibly look at drilling another well.
Is there any way to have in here that we can agree to increase but not reduce?
I can certainly propose it.
Okay, my next question is on page seven. In the last paragraph of H. So it says here that the town is supposed to use protective equipment that's required by applicable law. But then it also says that the city, upon a reasonable determination, can require us to do something greater than that. Shouldn't we just have to do what's required by law?
Yeah, I can't imagine what they would request us to do since they're the supplier or the buyer.
I would just like to take out that "or" upon a reasonable determination by the city that such is required to maintain the integrity of the city's system. Because whatever's required by law should meet that standard. They shouldn't be able to say something is required greater than that. In indemnity, we have what happens if the town does something, but we don't have anything that if the city fails to live up to their end of the bargain.
What would you suggest there, Kate?
Just a mutual indemnification.
Is Mark looking at this?
He hasn't heard back.
He has it, I have the background of this.
And I'd like his verbal, written, go ahead, too, that this is okay. On page nine, Section O, service area. The way this is written, it basically says that nobody can go into each other's service area without prior written consent of the other party, but forever. So say we do eventually want to do something with water within, you know, 20 years of this contract. We would need their written approval, even if we cancel our contract. So if we cancel our contract 10 years from now, we would still need written approval from them. So I would just say during the duration of the contract or during the term of the contract. Because otherwise, it's just forever. I just want to make sure, on page 10Q. Oh, wait, no, you said that it's just sewer, not water, that we don't have a problem with them. All right, that's all my questions on there.
Thank you so much. It's nice to have an attorney on the council. Thank you very much. Are there any other questions?
Is everybody able to follow the territory map? See who the boundaries are?
Well, do I hear a motion that we approve this? Or do you want to wait until we hear from our attorney?
I would like attorney's approval of it first.
We'll bring it back.
Okay, that'd be great, then, so we'll like you to bring that back. Do I need a motion for that? Do I hear a motion that we let, wait to approve this until we hear from our attorney?
I know.
A second.
All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Our next item is an additional full-time position in the Finance Department. Our finance officer is, it says, I'm requesting the reinstatement of a fifth full-time position in the Finance Department. My letter of explanation that was attached. Consider and approve the additional position. After reading the letter of explanation, do I hear any discussion about this request?
Where are we going to put it?
That's a great question. So I've got an additional small space, they're in the front. So one of their primary duties is going to be to serve the front area, where our need is the most. So we'll actually have two cash registered there. So we'll be able to have two lines coming in. So they will serve there, and there's a little space right behind there for like a workstation. So that's where I propose to put them.
Mayor, I'm a little reluctant to move forward on this tonight. We are very early in the fiscal year. I think maybe during the budget process might be a good time to consider it, but I'm not sure that I would want to see us do this now till we get further into the fiscal year and see exactly how things may fall out.
Also, on page 61, I would like to, there's a list of duties. I'd like to know what duties the personnel that we have now, the four, where these duties fall under them.
I can provide that for you.
Okay, that would, in other words, who does what now?
I mean, I could certainly provide that for you.
And also, with the new software that we purchased, I thought that would might, that might make it easier for our accounting department.
Well, I certainly hope so, and that's the plan. It's going to be a big project to undergo. That's why I'm requesting the position now and not waiting until next fiscal year. We looked at a couple of other options, maybe considering a temporary part-time person or just a part-time person. But really, I feel like what we really need is a person who can come in, ready to work, with an appropriate skill set, just ready to work right off the bat. You know, we've got it pretty much covered. The main issue is during peak times. We've got peak times during the year, during the month, and even during the day. I went and looked back at our call log, that's something I've got access to. There have been weeks in which we received 1,800 calls in my department. That's 120 calls per day, per person. That's 15 calls per hour between the three of them. That means the three of them for that week are sitting there doing nothing but taking calls. And they've got, you know, several of the duties that are followed by the wayside. And the other issue is, if at any time, any of those people are out for any reason, it's just a high burden on the other staff. In fact, just the last couple of months, we've had that. We've had deaths, we've had birth, we've had sickness in my department. And it's really, it's really caused a pain, a heavy burden. And the ones who unfortunately are suffering are the customers. Because I know that some of you have had complaints, you know, from some of your constituents, and they can't get through the phone. Sometimes the phone is ringing off the hook, the calls are actually dropping. We'll have lines out the door. In fact, if any of you had come in yesterday, you would have seen a line of customers out the door waiting to be served. We were doing the best we could. And it's not all the time, it's just during these peak times. We really could use another customer service person. I really think that would help us a lot. And in fact, there was a person, there was a fifth person there. I believe it was an interim director who cut that position. I'm a little disappointed that they cut it, because at the time when they made that decision, they had an interim, they had an assistant director, and also some of the duties were being contracted out to a person who is not an employee of the town. And now those three people are replaced. I comply alone and replace those three people. And so we've got more duties. There are a lot more duties that I'm trying to take on, a lot more projects I'm trying to move forward on. And it's really difficult to do that, I need feet on the ground for that. So that's why I'm requesting that now. I could have, I should have probably requested that in the last budget, but I didn't do that because I had just recently restructured my office. I had separated the duties out a little bit, hoping that would kind of ease up a little bit, and it did. That helped with some cross-training as well, so that when a person is out, there is now somebody who can take those duties over. But the issue is, you know, they just don't have the time. And, you know, it was just so early in the game, I didn't, I wasn't able to see the results of those changes that I made up until kind of now. And so I apologize, I didn't request it then, but, so yeah, that's my request.
Were we able to get any temporary help? I know you said the phones were ringing off the hook and that people needed to be re-hooked up and things like that. Were we able to find anybody who was able to come in to answer phones?
Well, we looked at a part-time, like an interim, part-time person. To pay that person 12 bucks an hour, it's going to cost the town 16 bucks, and that's with no benefits, plus training. I really need somebody with skills in my office. I need somebody who knows how to use Microsoft Excel, who's savvy with the technology. I've got technology that we're bringing in. And I need somebody who's going to be apt with that.
Kate, that was through a temp agency, and of course, they're in the business to make money, and they do.
Right.
Another concern of mine is, this is a person who's going to be handling our cash. I need somebody who I can trust there. I don't want a temporary person who has no tie with the town. I want somebody who is invested in this town, who's going to come in, ready to work, and who I can trust to handle that cash.
Any other questions or discussion?
Is the majority of the cash that's coming in for payment of utilities?
And taxes. That's the majority of it. We do, it could be anywhere between 250 to... Hopefully, our new software will help us with some of that. There are some additional features I'm thinking of implementing. But right now, somebody has to actually administer all of those payments. And, you know, there's that duty, and there are a couple of other things, collections. Of course, during COVID, it's not something I'm looking at, you know, being aggressive about. But when COVID is over, we really need to have a plan and a plan of action and process in place for collecting some of these payments. And right now, we've been really passive about it. We've got debt set off, I know some of you are familiar with that. But we need to be a little bit more forward-thinking with collections, because once something hits 90 days, it's uncollectible. So we need to be getting those things right from the get-go and not waiting and being passive about that. Another issue is, it's not really an issue, but it's a project that we really need to be looking at, is asset management. We need to know what assets and what stuff the town owns, and we need to be managing that better. And that's, there's no better department than the Finance Department to handle that project. It's just something that's not being done right now. It's on my to-do list.
Any other questions?
How are we coming with water payments?
So you've got some information in there. We're about 90% current right now. Right now, we are administering a payment arrangement plan for folks who are in arrears. We did start doing, unfortunately, we did have to start doing the disconnections and reinstatement of late fees. We're working with folks the best we can. You know, we've got kind of a process in place for that. It's kind of clunky and cumbersome right now because our software doesn't help us with that. We pretty much have an Excel spreadsheet that all of us are sharing. But we've got right about 70 people who are on that plan right now. We're working with them the best we can.
Any disconnections?
Yes.
That's why we couldn't get through on the telephone. Everybody was calling.
We've given, we've given folks every opportunity. We're not turning anyone down who's willing to come and, you know, request, you know, arrangement or something like that. We're trying to work with anybody and everybody the best we can.
Any other discussion? Do I hear a motion that we approve the hiring of this?
Like Ms. Hinton requested, to break these duties down to each individual that's on board right now and then show us what is not covered before we go forward with this.
Do I hear a motion that we table this until we hear from her, breakdown of the duties of the people that are already employed? Second?
Second.
All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Thank you very much. Our next item is a budget amendment number seven. That's the budget amendment seven, creates a special revenue fund for CARES Act. The coronavirus relief funds awarded in the amount of $88,787. And Sam, we're back to you to discuss that.
So we did take receipt of some CARES Act money that came from the county, and that's required to be accounted for in a special revenue fund. And so this budget amendment creates a special revenue fund to account for that.
Okay. And so that's just for, do we need to vote? We do need to vote on that. Do I hear a motion that we approve the budget amendment number seven?
Certainly.
Second.
All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
And motion carries. And then the last item is the consideration of this budget amendment, the fiscal year, and that's just for our information. Did any of you have any questions about that, or 8A? Nobody had any questions? Okay, then we'll receive that for our information. Randy, do you have a manager's report, please?
Just quickly, you guys know this because I put it in my weekly report, but as far as a special flood buyout program for property owners in the Indian Trail subdivision. So we are making progress on it, I have great hope for this. What the North Carolina Office of Resiliency and Recovery has asked us to do is identify a target area for the buyouts in that neighborhood, and then do an income survey of the households living there, whether it's renter occupied or homeowner occupied. So Nancy Nixon is working with myself, and we got a couple sample of those income surveys. I got one today from the Upper Coastal Plains Regional Council of Government that they use for their CDBG grant applications. It's just very simple. You're going to ask the number of people in the household, and is your household income greater or lower than this amount? These funds that we're talking about using for this buyout program are ultimately from the CDBG program. So they have, you know, they have the condition or the requirement, they can only be used to help people of low to moderate income. And that's what we're trying to determine with this survey. So I'm hoping next week, sometime, we can canvas the 12 to 15 homes in the targeted buyout area and get that income documentation collected, and then send it on to Maggie Lundie with the Office of Resiliency and Recovery. And get a little more on that all the time.
Do we have any idea how long this process is going to take us?
I don't, Larry, but as far as an actual buyout, I can almost guarantee it's going to be faster than the FEMA buyout program, which, you know, takes upwards of four years once it's awarded and you actually get to buying out homes.
And I take it with the survey, we're going to be making sure that everybody understands what's going on and just keeping all of these folks up to date, because I know they want to know what's going to happen.
Yes, yes. I mean, we're going to be knocking on the doors, so we will have opportunity to communicate with each and every one of them.
Thank you, Randy. Okay, that concludes council. Do you have any comments, Larry?
The last topic that Randy just mentioned, the buyout program for those residents that are here, spread the word around to the rest of people, so they'll know and expect us to be making the rounds, whoever. whoever, to be making the rounds and be prepared to, to have the information ready for them, so we can get you some help. Other than that, nothing, babe.
Louise?
Just recently in the news, we've had two local businesses that have been highlighted. And one is Brian and Ashley Hassel and their barbecue sauce. George's barbecue sauce. Is nominated as one of the coolest products this year in North Carolina. And the other one is Trey Braswell with Braswell Family Farms. As a young entrepreneur, only thirty-five, and doing well, and really building a business.
It was a great article I bought.
So I just wanted to mention those, and how proud we are of them, yes.
Louise, where were those articles at?
One was, I think both were in the telegram.
They were in the telegram? Yeah, go back and look.
Kate?
No comments tonight.
Well, I just appreciate the people that have come out tonight, and thank you for caring about Nashville. And we, as a council, we certainly do, and we hope you have a great time until we meet again. Do I hear a motion that we adjourn?
So may.
All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. All opposed, meeting is adjourned. Thank you so much, council.